So what drama?
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, May 24th, 2017 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with the minutes, approval of the minutes from the May 10th meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections, et cetera? Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think a motion will be approved.
Okay, okay, we have Dennis approving and making the motion and Rob seconding on favor.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to correspondence. Is there any correspondence from staff, Mike, tonight?
None from staff this evening.
Anyone else? Okay. Joel, did you, did the Transportation Commission meet since we last met? No? Okay.
That makes it simple. The last meeting was canceled. The next meeting will be on the second Thursday of June. I believe that's the eighth, four to six in this room, and I've not yet seen an agenda.
So we might, so our meeting is June, what, it's the following week?
Must be the seventh.
Yes.
Oh!
No, it would be the second.
Yeah.
So we might actually get a report from you.
Well, no, you won't because I'm gonna miss that because I'm heading down to Wisconsin to help celebrate my mother's 100th birthday.
Oh, well, congratulations. Well, that's a landmark. Okay, well, thank you, and now we've reached the point in the meeting for public comment. If anyone is here to speak to us about any issue that might be on your mind that's not before us tonight or in the agenda, we welcome your comments, and we have sort of a 15-minute time to set that aside. Is there anyone who wants to come forward and talk about anything other than maybe whatever the public hearing is about? Okay, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. All right, well, we'll move on then. So now, we have, we will open a public hearing in a minute here, but Mike's gonna give a presentation first about item four, which is the, well, I'll let you introduce it, so...
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Before you tonight, we have a public hearing for a rezone request at 822 Elm Street. So the proposal pertains to the Campus Christian Center at 822 Elm, about an 18,000-square-foot parcel. The rezone request before you tonight is to rezone from the R4, which is multifamily, residential, to the neighborhood business designation. Current uses, you have Campus Christian Center, which takes up the main floor, and then you had what was formerly Sisters Brew Coffee House, I believe, in the bottom floor of that building. So this is the building, or the property outlined in red, center of your screen. You've got Elm Street here, running north-south to the west, and then University Ave. You have an alley, which is a public alley that runs north-south, east of the property, so flanked on three sides by either two public streets or a public alley to the east. Surrounding land uses are predominantly university uses, so you have a lot of fraternities and sororities, as well as some multifamily developments to the east here. This would be the LDS Church to the southeast, and then you have The Perch, which is a convenience store slash restaurant, and they have some apartment units at the rear of that. And then, I guess, Kitty Corner would be the admin lawn, and Hello Walk heading up to the admin building. So the Google Street view of the Campus Christian Center property, this is looking off the intersection of Elm and University Avenue. This is looking, what would be northeast at the current building. You can see the building here, the main floor, and then the bottom floor further to the east there. This is on Elm, looking to the east. You can see the two-story building, and then the other portion of the large property with sidewalks that transect the large grass area, as well as an off-street parking lot, which is on their property as well. Taking a look at the land use designation in the comp plan, this would be civic and institutional would be the designation. Looking at this larger area, you have all these uses, so the campus core, as well as a lot of private uses within this area that are close to the university, within the civic and institutional designation as well. What that tells us in the comp plan is not a whole lot, so it really gives us no description about what that is. I think that may have been something that either was purposely missed or just wasn't included in the 2009 comp plan revision. So I think that's something we'll have to take a look at and maybe have a statement in there, a paragraph, about what the civic-institutional designation is intended for. Usually you have, you know, churches, schools, government office buildings, those are all usually within, you know, included within the civic and institutional designation, and so you have those spread throughout the community, and they really encompass any zoning designation. So you'll have maybe an R2 zone within a residential neighborhood, and you'll have a church, which just happens to be the civic-institutional land use designation as well. So there's really no one zoning designation that it points to. It really doesn't give you any direction on the appropriate designations, just because these uses are, tend to be scattered throughout the community. And we will, you know, I think while we're going through the comp plan now, we'll probably take a look at either, you know, maybe in this area, looking at maybe a university comp plan designation, I think would make a whole lot of sense, since we had, you know, at one point wanted to look at rezoning this entire area and reworking the university zoning district to include some of those private properties that surround, instead of this mixture of R4, university, and neighborhood business. So that'll probably be an upcoming project here in the next year or two. Looking at the zoning configuration, so the property is multifamily, which is R4. That would be the gold color on your screen, so almost all surrounding properties are within that R4, except for some university properties, so the admin lawn, that would be university designation, and then you have, the green is the university. And so you have these pockets of R4, and then you have these pockets of university scattered throughout. Across the street to the south, The Perch is actually in the neighborhood business zone, and the proposal would be to rezone this property to neighborhood business as well. So you would have these two properties. Usually we zone to the middle of the street, and so this should be, you know, really extending to the middle of the street for The Perch property, but it doesn't because it's an older zoning designation. So this is really, you know, creating one continuous neighborhood business district between this parcel, as well as The Perch to the south. Looking at what the neighborhood business zone says within the zoning code, lowest-intensity commercial zoning district permitted in the city. It's really intended to apply to areas less than two acres in size, and that's where commercial services may be provided in neighborhood locations. Commercial services permitted are those where traffic generation, access requirements, certain nuisance impacts on neighborhoods, neighborhood need for services, and noise production are compatible with those adjacent residential uses. And it's appropriately applied in the following circumstances: where local commercial facilities will serve the everyday needs of a limited neighborhood area; where activity levels associated with small-scale office development can be accommodated or tolerated by surrounding land uses and existing services; where a neighborhood core is identified, which is easily accessible by pedestrians or vehicular circulation; and where such commercial development will result in minimal interference with residential uses in the vicinity. And then looking at, taking a snapshot of what the allowed uses would be within the neighborhood business zone, really runs the gamut of some small, stale, commercial, restaurant uses, all the way up to residential uses, daycare facilities, churches, community centers, some retail sales, and personal services. Looking at the utilities and streets serving the property, it already has connections to water and sewer and their mains within those adjacent streets of adequate capacity to serve any of the intended future uses. You have Elm and University, those are local streets. They're all paved with curb, gutter, tree lawn sidewalks on both sides of the street. Elm has on-street parking on both sides, and University has just on-street parking on the south side of the street. And the on-street parking system in this area, even though they're city streets, is maintained by the university. So the Parking and Transportation Services office is responsible for regulating the parking, and I think a lot of the parking that's on-street is a purple permit, which is more of a fraternity-sorority resident permit. So just wanted to glance over the rezone criteria. This should be fairly fresh, since we had gone through these a little less than a year ago. So consistent with the comp plan, logical and orderly location of land uses and community services, uses expect to occur, will be compatible with the surrounding area, size-type density of development of the rezone will not place an undue burden on services, and then the size-type density of development expected can be adequately served by the existing transportation network, public facilities, and services. And the applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting, everybody within 600 feet was noticed, and that occurred on April 6th, 2017, and all those materials are attached to your packet tonight. Staff recommends the condition, conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed rezone at City Council, and then direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria and standards document. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from Commissioners?
Wendy?
Yes.
Mike, does this trigger a parking requirement that, there was no mention of it, but I was looking at the code, and it seems to indicate that there's a parking requirement for neighborhood business.
Yeah, there's a parking requirement within this whole area, and so it's unique because if it's a university property, then there really is no parking requirement, so that's part of the issue that we'll need to clear up with, you know, possibly an upcoming university zone amendment. But R4 parking requirements apply, neighborhood business parking requirements apply, so it's all dependent upon use. Since there's existing uses within this building, and they have a private off-street parking lot, that's just, that'll just be something we'll need to take a look at when they get a floor plan about, you know, change of use that they want to do with the building. A lot of the parking requirements are gonna be based upon square footage of the church, you know, the Campus Christian Center use, and then the entire basement, I don't know if Sisters Brew is still operating or not, it'd probably be something to ask the applicant, but it'll probably be a wash in that case, because you'll, you know, you used to have the use in the basement that was entirely more of a restaurant, coffee shop use, which would have required, you know, probably one stall per 200 square feet. And usually when you have a use that maybe is a convenience store type use, then it'd be a little bit similar, maybe a little bit less of a parking requirement. So just looking at it without a whole lot of detail about what they plan on doing, I wouldn't anticipate any need for, to increase that parking lot that they do have.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite the applicant, or whoever's representing the applicant, to speak first. It's an opportunity first for people to come up and, in support of the application or the rezone, and please, if you come forward, state your name, address, and we don't need your telephone number, but, yes.
My name is Ben Camp, 116 North Polk. Do I need to, like, what do I need to say?
Well, if you're up for speaking in favor...
Okay, yeah, I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, great, yeah, so whatever you want to tell us in, you know, a few minutes.
So to clarify, Sisters Brew is no longer there, hasn't been there for two years, at The anticipated use is that we would like the, to be able to lease this part of the first floor for retail sales, and that's why we're here.
So the application's talking about the co-op, so do you wanna say co-op?
I'd leave that to the co-op, but, yeah, I mean, that's, our intended lessee is the co-op, yes.
Any questions for Mr. Camp?
I'm more excited about it than you are.
I'm totally excited about it. I wish it had been there when I was working full-time on campus, because I, yes, anyway.
We've had a lot of great feedback from our neighborhood meeting, and just, you know, word-of-mouth feedback, there's a lot of people excited about this possibility.
Yeah, great. Okay, well, we'll invite other speakers in support of the...
Do I need to tell you?
You need to tell us your name and address.
My name is Melinda Schab. I live at 1034 Virginia Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm also the general manager of the Moscow Food Co-op. So our plan is to address one of the bullet points in the co-op strategic plan, which has to do with food access, and I think it's been about four years since we conducted that strategic planning survey, and some of the information that we got back suggested that folks in the bigger co-op community would really like us to have a presence on campus. And, I don't know, two, two years, two and a half years or so, I worked every angle I could possibly work with SEDEXO to try to get a co-op presence on campus, and we didn't really make any inroads. And then, I don't know, maybe a year, a year ago, or a year and a half ago, the bookstore approached us and asked if they could pick up some grab-and-go items from our deli and sell them when they had a location at the campus commons, and that went really well for us. And then we just started having this conversation with the Campus Christian Center, because it is private property, and our interest in providing food aligns with their interest in nourishing people in other ways, and we're really excited to be able to bring some really good food and some gluten-free food to campus. That's all I have.
Any questions, Commissioner? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes.
I'm Lorraine Sorensen. My address is 414 North Hayes Street, Moscow, Idaho, and I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Moscow Food Co-op. I would like to echo what Melinda just said, and also add on that I think that nutrition is so important to college kids. This is a time in their lives when they start to buy their own food, feed themselves as adults, and really set, you know, often this is where they set the patterns that'll be their diet for the rest of their adult lives. And I like that, you know, through our presence, through our presence on campus, if we are granted this rezone, it will allow us to really contribute to the health of these kids as they become citizens of Moscow, and of Idaho, and of the world. So please do, I just urge you to accept this rezone. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Kelly Moore, 1025 South Logan, and I'd like to also urge you to pass this rezone. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wanting to speak in support? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this proposal and/or have a neutral comment, would like to come up and speak? Okay, well, at this point, the applicant wants to say anything more? Are you pretty much good with what the discourse? Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and now we're open to internal discussion among the commission. Any comments for the commission? Joel?
I strongly support what is before us. I guess my question is, when we rezon a parcel of land, we of course apply that zone for the foreseeable future, irrespective of who may own it, who may be interested in selling it, or financial issues, or whatever. And I'm trying to visualize worst-case scenarios for a parcel of zone neighborhood business next to the university. What could go there with a neighborhood business zone that we would rather not have there? And maybe Mike would have a response to that.
Well, certainly, you know, you run the gamut of uses, which include residential uses, so, I mean, the area is surrounded by mainly residential uses with the sororities and fraternities, as well as the multifamily complexes that are close to this area as well. You have some retail sales, so it's mainly just convenience store type, restaurant-type uses. And so, you know, usually in looking at the intent of the zone, I think that this location would meet all of those criteria, you know? It would just give another option, so if you had a retail or a restaurant-type use, you know, I think that that would be compatible and not have really a negative impact on this area. I think you'd probably have more of an impact from the sororities and fraternities than you would from any of the uses that would be allowed, you know, underneath a neighborhood business zone. Churches would be allowed, so obviously, you know, you have the Campus Christian Center, you have the LDS Center there to the southeast, so those are fairly common. Daycare facilities, you know, those would be compatible. We have all those really in residential zones, they're allowed to go there. Professional offices, you know, usually you have some commercial zones that are more transitional, like the residential office zone, which would allow residential and these professional office uses. So those are deemed to be really compatible with each other. You know, you have professional offices that are generally, tend to be open during the day, you know, daytime hours, eight to five, and then the nighttime hours where commercial uses may have some type of impact on residential neighborhoods. You don't really see that with professional offices. Really, the only impact that you could, you know, imagine from any of these uses probably would be more towards a restaurant or a convenience store, which convenience store usually serves the adjacent neighborhood and doesn't generate a whole lot of noise and activity. In this area, I'd imagine there'd be a lot of foot traffic and less vehicular traffic. I mean, this is really more of an isolated campus area, and I don't see that somebody from across town would be driving over here in order to use, depends on what the, you know, depends on what the convenience store is or restaurant is, but I don't think you'd have that big of a traffic impact with those uses or a nuisance impact. So in my opinion, these, any use that would be allowed in this zone would be compatible with this surrounding area. I mean, this is about, as far as, you know, neighborhood business is intended to be surrounded by residential areas, and as far as residential areas go, this is about as probably high a density, high-impact residential as you see in town with fraternities, sororities, and multifamily. So, you know, for allowing this type of neighborhood business pockets in R3 and R4, you're gonna see a lot, you know, more impact to those neighborhoods than you would this neighborhood.
Other comments?
I was just in, sort of response to your comment, or your thought, or question, we've been trying to get neighborhood businesses in many neighborhoods, and everybody's always against it, and I don't, I'm not one of those people who can understand why, but this seems to me to be, you know, if you have a neighborhood area of five acres, that's a whole nother thing. Now you can talk about bigger boxes and stuff like that. This is just that perfect size from a quarter of an acre to two acres that is perfect, I think, for neighborhood businesses, and it would occur to me that the university needs to come up against the potential that there might be other ways to do things. I don't want to make any comment about SEDEXO, but, you know, what we probably don't need is just one way of thinking about the edge of our campus, as we see Sixth Street developing in a wonderful way for students, as a course back and forth. It just seems ideal, and I guess, since I think the co-op is the best thing that ever happened to Moscow since, you know, since the Great Depression, I think this is just a brilliant idea.
Yeah, I would echo that. I think having, it seems like other college campuses that I've certainly participated in and more familiar with, I always found it strange that there wasn't some kind of edge of commercial services for students, I mean, you know, to access more easily, particularly when there was the big void along Sixth Street where there was, and most, many don't use their cars or own cars particularly, you know, and I know we have discourse about that too, but it seems like it's about time to have some type of capacity besides one little site that's been by itself and gone in and out of business. So having that asset.
You know, if you could go back to many, many years beside the little other neighborhood business, there used to be another across the street, a little burger place, and all those things were kind of well-used, but just never flourished.
Well, even when I first arrived in 1987, there were commercial uses in the old sub. I mean, you know, like hairdressers or whatever, and those sort of gradually went by the wayside. So it's gotten more and more off-campus and away from campus, so, anyway.
You know, it occurs to me that it presents kind of a unique opportunity because it is privately-owned property, so it gives something to the university that university almost can't do itself.
Right, right.
So I think everybody certainly agrees that it's an appropriate thing to do.
Yes, great.
I like, I like the idea of rezoning that, and while we can't, we can't make our decision on what particular use might be contemplated by the rezone, I mean, somebody could put anything, a greasy burger joint if they wanted to, but the concept of the neighborhood business in the midst of a residential area like that, sort of, it almost needs more area than, you know, the little, the little perch slot that it has. The more, the more space you make for business to come in, the better, all the businesses tend to do, and I'm sure there's a lot of, well, that leaves a lot of room for growth and creativity as time goes by, and I think that could turn into a really nice little pocket downtown core with some, some great space to enjoy in the nicer weather. So I'm in favor of it.
No.
Mike, is the Campus Christian Center nonprofit?
That'd be a question for them.
Yes, it absolutely is.
And so does that have an impact on what, any business that might come into this neighborhood? Do you think? That's, I think that's a, I would presume that the businesses would be dealt with as a standalone thing, but I'm not so, lawyer, lawyer, we have a lawyer here, don't we? You wanna talk about Lorraine?
Well, usually the portion, so if you have a church property and they lease a portion for some type of commercial use, then usually just that portion is taxed. So it wouldn't be the entire thing, it would just be the portion of the building that would be taxable.
And since, of course, that Campus Christian, we don't know that they won't sell the land, but at least at the moment, it's hard to imagine any unpleasant kind of business, that since the Campus Christian Center is, has a pretty high moral standing, so, gosh, I think it's just as... think it's just a slam dunk.
Any other comments? Are we ready to call for a motion? Anybody?
I would move that we recommend the proposed rezone to City Council.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, so now we need to have a second motion directing, do we have any relevant criteria we want to add to this, or that they serve really good sandwiches and suits?
A question about the CI designation. Do we, since that's not specified, is that critical that we come up with some sort of description of what that is before we deal with this, or can we just say it's compatible with the existing neighborhood and it's not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, I think we leave it like that. I mean, it, it's something that, I mean, we have these, you know, across the street is the CI designation, and that's neighborhood business. So, you know, it wouldn't be contrary, it really is silent about what the CI is intended to achieve. I mean, it's implied with just the name that it's civic and institutional uses, but that'll just be something that we'll, you know, take a look at with the comp plan update, but right now, I think it's, you know, consistent with the comp plan. There's really no goals, objectives, or implementation actions that are contrary to the rezone, so I don't think we have an issue there.
Okay, thanks.
So, we don't have any suggestion for relevant criteria or standards? We just need to put that on you?
Just direct staff.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion to direct staff to prepare relevant?
I'll direct staff. I will move that staff prepare a statement of relevant criteria and standards for our later approval.
Thank you, and Rob's second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Okay.
Slowing me up.
Yeah, well, thank you. So that's, now we're out, okay. So now we're on to item six, which is the 2009 Conference of Plan Update, Chapter Four, Parks and Rec. So if you guys want to hear about Parks and Rec, you can stay.
So within your packet, I had included, so these are a lot of the changes that we talked about last time, so this is the proposed changes in legislative format, so that's what I've done here. I know that there were a number of items that we discussed last time, and I just wanted to mainly just go over what we had discussed, and there are some, some of those that I had, modifications that I had made. I think that one was just the citations at the bottom of a lot of the tables. I added City of Moscow Parks and Recreation Department, so most of those, I was, you know, those were different depending upon what table you looked at. So some said Parks and Recreation Department, some said City of Moscow, so I just made those consistent throughout the entire document. We had some discussion about clarifying, you know, we have the community parks, and we have this large deficit that we're projecting in 2030, and we had a discussion last time about having a narrative within here to talk about the great things that the university has available, so the admin lawn, the arboretum, and so I was just going through, I didn't make any of those changes, I had just kind of identified the areas where we talk about the university within our, within the Parks and Rec chapter. So I just wanted to go through, you know, whether or not you thought that was sufficient, or if there was other areas where you thought that we could add more narrative about the great things that, you know, the community as well as students that attend the university have to utilize at the university. So if you look at page 4.5, under special use parks and facilities, the second paragraph talks about special use facilities commonly include civic centers, museums, conservancies, and arboretums, such as universities, arboretum, and botanical garden, nature park, nature centers and parks, fairgrounds, ice rinks, water parks, gymnasiums like Hamilton Low, Aquatic Center, as well as the Herk, larger-scale sports stadiums or colosseums like Guywix Field and Kibbe Activity Center on the U of I campus, and other special features. The presence of the University of Idaho greatly expands the list of these facilities. Those that are subject to this plan include the spaces and facilities listed in table 4.5. So, you know, usually since this is a city document, we just list in our tables the properties that are owned by the, of the city. So we talked about the, you know, other things within this paragraph about, that the university brings, but don't specifically list it in the special use parks and facilities section. And then...
But are we going to do that? Is it your intention to try to wedge, to, I mean, it seems to me that we should, I realize we'll have to be a little bit mealy-mouthed about it, but I can't, it seems to me that things like the, not only Wix Field, but especially their arboretum and such places mitigate the deficit that we're acting like we have.
I don't, I guess I, I'm probably the only, I'm a minority opinion, but I don't really agree with that. I think when we look at a community this size, it's underserved by a nice central park, a sizable park like Sandpoint has, like Coeur d'Alene has, like many, many communities have. We don't have that, but we have a lot of pocket parks, and when maintenance is the, the sort of thrown in there, the cost of maintaining, when you look at the fact that the mowing crew has to go, or shoveling crews have to go from little pocket park to little pocket park, to little pocket park, whereas if we had one central, larger park consolidated, the efficiency of maintaining something like that would be much more cost-effective for the number of people who use it. So I, I feel like we have a deficiency. I love the university, but it's still the university. It's not, you know, it, and we have a lot of recreational fields, but we don't have casual recreational spaces, and that sort of natural, many natural areas. We have great linear parks with our path systems, you know, I think we're doing really well there. But I guess I wish we were a little more ambitious for a community this size to have a really robust park.
Well, if you think keeping the deficit figure there does encourage us to move in the park direction, I certainly, I wouldn't argue that, I wouldn't argue against that at all, I just...
Well, pocket parks are really inefficient to maintain, I mean, because they're so spread out and so small, and you have to load the equipment, unload the equipment, you see the guys going all over the place, you know, and by comparison, if you have a central, you know, one larger park, you can, you get more use out of it, more diversity in use, et cetera.
I'd just be curious how the rest of the commission...
I said I might be a minority opinion.
...about it. I, I'm, I'm probably not a good example. I don't go to parks very often because I kind of live in a bucolic little, with trees and stuff, so I'm, I'm not, and since I'm right across the street from East City Park, maybe I'm...
Well, I just think of having visitors with kids, little kids, and we end up going to the schools, you know, the schools aren't really our parks, yeah.
You know, I was kind of the one that brought this issue out of context and making, I was trying to mitigate the, the view of the deficiency, but I hadn't thought about it in the same way that you're relating, and I think you make a really good point, so you're not exactly in a minority. So maybe the issue really is, do we want to encourage larger parks by making sure that this does describe a deficit? So it's a document that, that would encourage potentially...
It needs to have some aspiration.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I can see your point, and I'm, I'm good with that.
Joe?
I can also see the point. I think, I think we're in danger of overusing East City Park.
I agree, I agree.
You have to have a look at it after, after rent there, or whatever, we're, we're wearing it out. We need more big spaces, and we need to spread out some of those uses.
It's really the scale of a neighborhood park more than a community-wide park.
But it's being used as a, as the community-wide park.
And I think it was, Brock brought up, brought up having readings on the subject of trying to get parks more central, and I did do a little bit of a search for that. One of the problems I see in this area, and it depends totally on community context, how you match up, but we have cheap land out of town or on the edge of town, we have expensive land in town, so if you really wanted to have open space acquisition, it's got to be on the edge, I mean, it's farmland, you know, and it goes down in price per acre substantially compared to trying to get something central. So it would become important to find something that is integrated with our linear park system so people can access it through multimodal means, but, but I guess I want to be a proponent for thinking about the future and having more park space that's accessible for kids with bicycles and adults and, you know, everybody else.
I think we have like five or six unfinished parks that are designated, don't we, somewhere?
Yeah, we have more than that. I mean, it...
Well, maybe one of those spots, what I'm saying is, could be big enough for something like you're talking about.
Yeah, well, you know, the community park section, so that's usually five to 25 acres, I believe, is the, the community park number. We just have East City and we have Mountain View, and those are really our only two community parks. So if you look at the deficit areas, it's mainly in the southwest corner and the southeast. So I think that that was spurred part of that conversation about the arboretum and the admin building. But we do have Palouse River Drive ballfields, so, you know, that, obviously, we've got the Joseph Street ballfields now, so, but we still own that property, and it's 44 acres. So, you know, that could serve a need in that sector of the community, it's not a central location, but it is a large piece of property that could be developed in the future into a park, and, you know, in 2030, what all the projections and recommendations say is we're going to need another 100 acres of parkland for community, just for community parks.
I mean, you look at Coeur d'Alene, and you think of the beach, but it also has Tubbs Hill, you know, and Sandpoint has that whole point and, and other parks as well along the railroad corridor, et cetera, and, you know, there, Coeur d'Alene is bigger, but Sandpoint's substantially smaller, and, I don't know, I just feel like that's a good suggestion that you have, Dennis, that maybe we look at what we already have as a starting point and look at it as a bigger, with a bigger idea.
Yeah, and we're, we're rather dense, you know, I think, compared to Coeur d'Alene, Sandpoint. They also have the benefit of these large riparian floodplain areas, so like up against the lake, up against the river and lake there in Sandpoint, you know, there are areas that you really can't develop, and that's the best thing for it, is to have a linear park or a large contiguous piece, you know, piece of land for a park. And I think that that, you know, is part of our challenge, is just because we are fairly dense and, you know, we are pretty well-built out in the core of the city, and a lot of that property is expensive, you know, it's going to be a high value in Legacy Crossing and Dumas, and, you know, a lot of the larger pieces that are left are going to fetch quite a bit higher of a value just because of the proximity to downtown, the university, and Legacy Crossing, so that would be the challenge with the city going out and trying to purchase, you know, some of that land.
Okay, I just had to get my...
Well, I think it's a good, it's a good thing. I don't feel, I just am anxious that people who may not think in these terms, if you think, you know, I'm one of those people that has spent so many years on the campus, I don't consider the campus a place where I can't go, because I consider my campus hello, and I, I've run soccer fields, I've used the campus for soccer, I've used the campus for camp, for picnicking, so I, but not everybody does. A lot of people feel a little intimidated, I think, by the campus, and so I was just thinking we should talk about it a little bit to realize that it's an amenity, but I certainly wouldn't want to be arguing against finding a, a park, somebody...
Well, you know, it's, I was thinking about, when I was writing for Archipedia about the history of Moscow, and the university is a big identity giver for Moscow, downtown is a marketplace, but the third one is its surrounding agricultural sort of camus, camus root kind of natural landscape, and we don't really have any park that really celebrates our natural landscape and, as part of its identity, whereas Coeur d'Alene has the lake, and, you know, Sandpoint has its lake, and other places have their natural areas, that is our natural surround.
So, in a sense, we'd be a man-made thing unless we grow out and take over part of Moscow mountain.
We'd have to re, well, we'd have to, you know, take what's been sort of turned into agriculture and turn it into more indigenous plants, you know, in terms of a...
But that's not a, we know that New York just took a piece of totally ugly land and turned it into one of the great parks in the world.
But they had the vision to set it in their plan, as you know.
They were smart enough to do that. So we need to encourage some, there's, there's only about five owners to go talk to and say, who would like to itemize 10 acres for a...
Right.
So what do you think a size would be, Michael? You know, if we wanted another park, let's see, how big do we say Mountain View is? 11?
Yeah, it's, I think East City is...
Oh, East City's six.
Seven, seven acres, Mountain View's 16.
15. So if a park, would you, would you be thinking 20 acres would be something, or would you think it would be more than that?
Well, you know, the, the example of the range of a community park size that they give is five to 25 acres.
Oh, five to 25, okay.
Is what the, they recommended standard, and so, you know, we have, Palouse River Drive ballfields would be quite a bit larger, that's 44 acres, so...
And that's not being, I don't, I'm not as from, okay.
Not being utili, I mean, it's not developed, they have a pump track, which is a bicycle track there.
Oh, yeah.
Like a cyclocross type track.
Yeah, and Sandpoint developed some of those on their interior, not on the waterfront, you know, same thing.
And so that was an example of a group, more of like a cyclocross club that approached the city in order to create the pump track on that property, and they just did it all themselves. So it's, it's mainly in its natural form right now, but they have the track that goes through there, and then they have a fairly rough parking lot where they go there and park, and so, you know, that could be some of the collaboration, like they have examples of in the plan about working with the private clubs and entities in order to, you know, develop some of these parks, so...
Right, great.
But that would go a long way. I mean, we, if we're, need 100 more acres by 2030, and if we develop that park, that would nearly cut that in half, so...
Yeah, sounds like a good opportunity.
And plus, it's got the creek that goes through there, you know, South Fork of the Palouse Creek, and so you have some pretty neat options to, you know, to go through.
Well, and there are some, there are organizations throughout the community that do a lot of trail maintenance as volunteers, I mean, and I could see some of that happening, you know, as a possibility, yes.
A purely editorial comment on table 4.5, dealing with special use parks and facilities. The format of that table is altered from the earlier ones. The earlier ones made subtotals for developed acreage and a subtotal for undeveloped, and table 4.5, the undeveloped is taken care of by a asterisk. I think it'd be better to change the format and make, make a subtotal undeveloped and, just to be consistent, just to be consistent.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I could do that. And then further on, we...
Michael, one last question. Do you think... Michael, one last, uh, question. Do you think, I mean, I don't know if we've sat down ourselves as a commission to think about where the growth is gonna happen. I've always thought it's heading toward Moscow mountain and that unless something really outlandish happens, it doesn't seem like it's gonna go across Palouse River, uh, Drive. And when, when we tried to deal with the, uh, land that the university owns behind the, uh, dairy, that didn't seem to get any traction either, uh, but it might at some point. It's hilly. But I just, uh, was trying to ima- rather than just me talking in-
That's where you should hope growth happens because people are either headed from the east side of town, through town to the, to the mall or to the university or to WSU or to Switzer.
I guess what this, what this discussion, uh, brings up to me is, it seems to me, and, and how we do this, I don't, I, I'm not ready to say right now, but we struggle with this issue when we write a comp plan. But we, uh, we haven't really sat down as a group. And it seems like every five or six years, we probably should do that with the commission and try and imagine how the town, how the town's growing or how it could grow. And to make, uh, we, we can't force it, but we can imagine what could happen. Because just to talk about, well, we need parks is just pie in the sky in my estimation. Doesn't mean anything at all. What direction are we talking about? What direction's the city growing where the, a park would be surrounded by, uh, by, uh, people? It's interesting, I suppose, if you think of, um, of the parks in, in, uh, in Boise, you know, they, they had the hardest time getting their first park way back when they were little. Julia Davis, a guy by the name of Tom Davis, tried to give the city this land and the city wouldn't take it. And the city kept saying, "No, it's, it's flooded every year and we don't want a bunch of swampy land for a park. And so just go away." And then this guy, Tom Davis, kept hanging on to the idea. And of course, now that there aren't, aren't floods anymore, uh, you know, it turned out to be a great gift to the, to the city. But, and then right across, so they use the river as a, as a way. We don't have anything that approximates a, a river to give us that kind of, uh, guidance. The crick, that piece of property over on Palouse River Drive certainly looks like a good thing, but I'm not sure that I see housing surrounding it anytime soon. And so I, I don't know how we could spend some P and Z time in the planning mode of talking just about that growth of Moscow. But I think it would be an exciting thing to do and, uh, because you just have to keep doing it every few years. You know, we, we, occasionally, we, we've tried-
Well, sometimes those, um, decisions end up being fixation points for development. So if you put a park here, then there's not much development. All of a sudden, it becomes an asset and, and encourages funds development.
I think it's a really exciting issue. And if there are, and it's hard to find people that are visionary to guide us in our little, you know, lives, eight to five lives that we lead. And, uh, I don't, I'm just thinking right now about the university has been struggling with how to deal with an entry to the arboretum. And they're struggling with an issue of the President's House and they're struggling with the, and that hill is there. And they've just been gnawing at it for the last 20, 25 years. And now, all of a sudden, they got a young planner that has changed every, uh, and all of a sudden, they're talking about tunneling under the mountain and, and, uh, and really tying the campus together with the arboretum in significant ways. And it's just, uh, we're not, uh, we haven't been brought up to speed about it, but it's been, it's being discussed in, in, on campus. And I guess, um, if we had a chance to have a, a couple of dollars, it, it would be, wouldn't be the worst thing to try in the next year or two to have an, uh, to do another one of these planning kinds of things where we, maybe we bring in somebody who's, uh, not afraid to, um, kind of break crystal and, uh, and to guide us in a, uh, in another one of those, uh, uh, planning sessions. Just talking about the parks gets me all excited about what the possibilities are in our city and I see as we grow. But I just don't think, just sitting here kind of casually saying, "Yeah, well, we need a park," doesn't really quite get us where we'd, I think, where we'd like to go. And, and on occasion, maybe once every six or eight years, uh, Planning and Zoning could actually jump into the planning saddle maybe and, uh,
Well, you know, that hasn't happened since I've been on the commission. What's the history in the past of that happening and what was the structure?
Well, you know, in occasion, when we, last time is when we worked on the comp plan reading.
Okay, yeah.
And, and then we brought in people and we'd have some meetings and get citizens, uh, involved. And so I don't, I'm not suggesting that we're just six of us sit around the table, but it's a chance to invite in.
Well, we have a, a little bit of continuing ed budget, right? So we could bring somebody in.
Anyway, it, as we look at the comp plan, uh, I, uh, the idea of planning is, uh, is really exciting. But you do it and you do it and then stuff falls apart and then you forget about it. And then you do it again and stuff falls apart and you forget about it. That's kind of the way it goes. But you need to keep doing it. You, uh, one shouldn't be discouraged because we see things, uh, happening, just like this little thing tonight. I think that growth of the, of the, uh, that the idea of an outreach for the co-op is really a brilliant move. And it's hard to know what that'll lead to, but we're gonna tear down that building in a few years and build something significant on that piece of property might, would be a guess I have. And why not? And Campus Christian could always have a room, you know, but it could become something really intriguing. So, anyway, I just, I just thought maybe we could put our mind to that a little bit as we're looking at the comp plan. It puts us in that, uh, in that mode. Bring in somebody who isn't afraid or who's had some experience. Cause I, I guess the dilemma I see is Moscow, in the next few years, has gone and stopped being a village and kind of become a town, if you know what I, what I'm getting at. We're, we're really just one neighborhood almost right now. And, but as you get past, as you edge past 30,000, you start to change that, uh, the view, uh, of it. And, um, some of these things won't happen for a few years. There'll be, our, our children will be, um, engaged with them. Anyway, that's just a little, uh, food for thought.
Yeah, the, the part of the issue with our parks is that we have a slow growth rate, right? And so we don't have these really large subdivisions being platted. They're all smaller subdivisions. And so what you end up with parkland requirements for just that subdivision, you know? I mean, maybe Parks and Rec at, at some point could look at banking that requirement and then, you know, trying to consolidate it into a, a larger park. But we have the issue right now with the fee in lieu of is so low that, uh, you know, at 13,000 an acre, you couldn't buy any, any, any type of large land for, for that.
No park's gonna happen with that sys- that system. That's just a little thing for tiny, uh, things. So somebody, we alre- already said this, but we, we just don't have enough wealthy people around who want to deify their wife, uh, you know? That seems to be the deal. You, you make a park and say, "Oh, it's a, uh, it's a Sarah's Park and, and there it is." And that's probably, uh, I just don't know where, where that will come from because we lean on the university so mightily for, for whatever it is that's happening here. I think Greg's gonna be rich soon and he will, uh, he could let, he could leave a park.
So then the only other thing I have is, uh, on page four dot 16, we talk about all the partnerships that could exist. And we have, uh, quasi-public entities, so we talk about, you know, this is kind of getting back to highlighting the university. Says the university has a great interest in the public open spaces and recreation activities for their students. City should explore partnership opportunities with the university that could be mutually beneficial in providing recreation opportunities for the university's students and the community. And then we talked about last time, uh, potentially including land trusts in this list as well as PC and I, EI. I think that that could maybe be one of these stakeholders that we list on this page of saying, you know, we, we talk about working with all these entities. And that's just one other entity that we could, you know, think about working with in the future uh, for, you know, conservation easements, gaining public access across, uh, those, you know, conservation easements. Maybe if it's just pathway access. And I know that there are some that have, uh, restored some of the Palouse Prairie habitat to its native form and, but they're just not, uh, open to the public. So, you know, I think that that would probably be a good location for that comment that we talked about last time to, to be included within, you know, this list, so.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that too. Okay, yeah, so that's pretty much what you have for the-
Yeah, so I, I'll just, I just wanted to run by, uh, everything that I was, you know, had changed and then the, the final things from our conversation last time that, uh, I was planning on changing. And I'll have, uh, those revisions for next time.
Great. Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right. Item number seven, use table ordinance definitions and off-street parking tables. So we have a updated parking table. I mean, excuse me, I mean, use table?
Yeah, I have a, a off-street parking table that I had put together. So I'd given you, uh, a slide, I think, last time on what that was gonna look like. I ended up, uh, finishing putting it together. I still need to go through and, and do some formatting to make it consistent. Uh, there are, you know, usually it's the one slash 100, you know, I'm gonna change everything to one per 100 just to make it, you know, more consistent through the entire, uh, table. But I've got the, the proposed table and then I've got the existing at the very end. So, uh, you can kind of follow what we went from to what we're proposing. Uh, most of the items on here or all the, the calculations, I've just carried over to our new uses within the proposed table. So I really didn't want to go through all these individually. It was more of just giving it to you to take a look at in your spare time and see if there's anything that jumps out at you as being odd and we could talk about it. Uh, but I will, so like all the blank spaces where you don't have a parking requirement, so agricultural uses, um, I'll just put none required in, in that space and then clean up the rest of the spaces. But, um, there are some things that, that came up when we did the off-street, uh, or the, yeah, the off-street parking section ordinance. So that was approved by council, uh, last week and, uh-
What were the minor amendments they made to it? I read in the paper that it was approved with minor amendments. Do you remember?
It was all the ones that were proposed.
Oh, were they? Oh, 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 yeah.
So, yeah, it was, it was all, yeah. It, it was as, uh, P and Z, as you recommended. Yeah, yeah. Uh, but it was brought to our attention, and we had noticed this in the past. If you look at the, uh, retail and personal services line item, so retail sales, you have, uh, requirements based upon the size of the structure. So if it's less than 5,000, you go with a one per 400 square foot calculation. Uh, if it's 5 to 25,000, you go with a 10 plus 1 per 400. But if you do the math on that, so say you went, uh, 4,999 square feet divided by 400.
I've lost you. Where are you? What page?
Page two.
Oh.
So if you just flip it to the inside, look at the very bottom, it's under retail and personal services.
Oh, okay. I missed that one. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
So retail sales, you look over, it says less than 5,000, 1 per 400.
Gotcha, yeah.
So if you were to do, let's say a building is 4,999 square feet, divide that by 400, you end up with 12 and a half.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd be required to provide essentially 13 spaces for a 4,999 square foot building. If you look up to the 5,000 to 25,000 square foot at the next page, so this is still under retail uses. It says large retail establishment there.
Right, right.
10 plus 1 per 400 in excess of 5,000. So if you were at 4,999 square feet, you'd be required to provide 13. But if you went up to 5,000 square feet, then you'd just be required to provide 10.
Yeah, some, something doesn't-
So that, you know, that's the way our, our codes existed.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, I can't give you an answer as to why that is.
Okay.
Looking at, so we were, we were looking at, uh,
Good eye on that one.
You know, cha- changing that. So that was brought up. Um, and then greater than 25,000 square feet, uh, that actually, those two meet. So if you were looking at, you know, 24,999 and 25,000, they're about at 60. So that, that meets there. It's just that the earlier point of the 5,000, uh, doesn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense. And then we drop to 1 per 300 if you get over 25,000. And I don't know if I have a, an answer for why that is either. Usually the bigger you get, maybe the, the, you know, the less amount of parking you require somebody to provide. I mean, it seems almost the opposite of, of what, um, you would want to do in that circumstance. So, uh, we'll, we'll look into coming up with a, a different, uh, calculation for retail. But other than that, most of the, most of the current calculations seem like they made sense. I fixed the stables, so clarified that they're stalls and not stables from last time.
Right, I noticed that.
So I did, I did fix that. Um, but we, we had just put this together, so we hadn't had a whole lot of time to go through and really think about in a whole lot of detail, all of these requirements. They're largely just, uh, transferred over from our previous table. And obviously, we've got a lot more uses that we have listed here than what we had listed with our bare bones, uh, parking table that we have right now. So, um, like I said, if you, you wanted, wanted to go through that on your own time and, and see if those made sense, uh, to you, I think we'll probably come back next time. I'll have it a little bit cleaner with, uh, some of those blanks filled in and then some consistent language throughout. And then maybe look at, uh, coming up with a different standard for the retail establishments.
Right, right, yes. The smaller ones. Yes. Okay, so is that pretty much what you have on?
That's what I have, and I, and I just passed out, uh, the definition section. So those were our, our kind of final two items that we needed to, to wrap up for the use table ordinance. And so what we talked about last time was, um, having the, the NIACS terms, uh, not just the number, but the actual def- you know, portion of the definition within the definition section. So I've gone through and, and copied the first part of all those definitions that are pertinent and added those to the definition section. Uh, we'll still, there are some things, uh, that I highlighted in that that we're, we're still gonna, to, to need to look at. There are a lot of terms that we ended up, uh, not using in the code, and so we ended up just deleting. So, you know, for instance, billboard, uh, we previously had that, but we defined that in the sign code. So there wasn't a need to, to have a definition of a billboard. And it's actually a different definition than we have in the sign code. So, um, those things we are just going through and eliminating. Um, we'll have to take a greater look at, uh, all these uses that we have for, we have a lot of terminology like accessory building, accessory structure. And then the next page, um, building. And then further on in the chapter, we have structure. You know, it's just a lot of similar terms that we'll have to go through and, and just see if they, if they inter, you know, relate to each other. And, uh, so that's what we're, we're- And so that's what we're working on right now. But I do have all the NIACS terms in here, and what we've done is just had the use, and then in parentheses, have the NIACS number right after that. So you could reference it in the definitions, and then we'll, in the use table, we'll have the number in there as well. So you could reference that at different, different locations. But other than that, it's just really going through and replacing the current uses with what the proposed NIACS uses are going to be, and then just thinking about some of the, you know, definitions that we may have had issues with in the past, and fixing those, and proposing, you know, better language. So if you look at page seven of this document, so like dwelling, we have two-family, we have multifamily. So right now, we say for two-family, which is more like a duplex, building containing two kitchens and designed to be occupied by two families living independently of each other. Well, there's two dwelling units there, right? So it's, you know, not just, that's not the only distinction, that there are two kitchens. There's two units in a two-family dwelling. And so it would be, you know, clarifying a lot of this language that really is kind of antiquated. So right below that, multifamily dwelling, says a building designed to house three or more families living independently of each other and having one yard in common. Well, it's, multifamily is just three or more units, three or more dwelling units. So we have a lot of these definitions that just need to be updated, at least, you know, some of the ones that we are keeping. And so that's what we're going through right now, and I just wanted to pass this out as well, so you could start going through it, and seeing if it makes sense to you, or we need to do something different, or, you know, change something about it, or if something strikes you as odd, and maybe it's a use or a definition that we haven't thought of that need to be in there. So really just wanted to hand it out, to have you guys go through. I didn't want to blow a bunch of time going line by line on definitions. I figured that-
So the color coding, Mike, is there a significance for what's red and what's blue?
The color coding, the red is what is currently there.
Okay.
And the blue is, the blue's the changes.
Okay.
What's the blue with the line through it, and some blue is underlined without the line through it?
The blue with the line, with the underline is, that means that it's been added. The blue with the line through it means it's been deleted.
Because in some cases, it has both. Like, at least to my eyes, on page nine.
Some of it's like underlined in red, then crossed out in blue.
Right, right, yeah. So page nine, towards the bottom, for example?
Seven or nine, yeah.
Yeah.
Seven, there's a lot of that, that whole one, two, three, the whole grouping.
Yeah, there's, so that, like, on page nine, the gasoline station. So we have gasoline station as an existing use, but what we've added is the NIACS definition of what gasoline station is. So we've added the NIACS code four four seven. We go through the current NIACS definition, and then we've struck the old definition. So the red underline with the blue strike through means that it's deleted.
Okay.
How about next time, I'll just have a copy with no blue on it, just to show the strike through.
Yeah, that, that-
We just got, when she, you know, put, because this got moved from a different section.
Gotcha.
So with this ordinance, to put it in this ordinance, to move it in here, it was all added, so that's how we-
I thought it was for Memorial Day, you know, you're just trying to be patriotic. Yeah.
So the red is added.
Red's existing.
Existing.
Blue is added.
Blue is added, but blue with blue lines through it, even though it has red underlines, is deleted.
Blue with no line through it is added, right? The blue underline is added, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
If it doesn't have red underneath it. No. I'm sorry, I've mixed up now.
The blue underline, not the red underline.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. When I'm going through, I just don't want to waste my time.
I'm glad I have a black and white printer.
Reading something's deleted already.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Take a walk, Mike. Take a half an hour out and walk around town. You know, just when you see too much blue and red, well, go over to the blues place and get yourself a potato.
Well, I've been staring at this on a computer screen for about the last-
Oh, yeah, no, I can see.
Three days, so I'm all red, white, and blue by now.
All right, any more on that subject? Item seven? Nope, okay. So our final topic is just shared readings, and Rob had people, different commissioners suggested different topics last time, and we decided to focus on repurposing malls, or doing, you know, the economic development with the focus this time on malls. And Rob came up with some good suggestions, Joel did. I Googled repurposing malls today, and there were probably ten articles that came up, and just started to go through them. And what I'm going to ask, because I depart the country on Friday and won't be back till right before the next meeting, is if, do you mind taking the lead on figuring out, the two of you maybe, or on which articles we read for the next?
You know, we can make malls into churches, in case you have noticed.
Yeah, I know, we have malls.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So we have a very good example. You can just, boom.
Well, some of the-
If you want shares in IER, I say not.
Some of the titles are, "The Place Where Old Fashioned Malls Are Beating Amazon", "Small Town America", it's not so small town, because it's by the Washington Post. The, "Here's What Could Happen To America's Hundreds Of Dead Malls", and that's Business Insider. "A New Life For Dead Malls" in The Atlantic. "See How Old Malls Are Being Repurposed Into Brilliant and Beautiful Spaces", and that was in Simple Most. "Seven Dead Shopping Malls That Found Surprising Second Lives", and that was in Gizmodo. "Retrofying Dead And Dying Suburban Malls", and that was in Planet Zen, Planet Zen, Planet Zen, I don't know what it is. But anyway, those are just some of them, and so if, what do you want, like, maybe three or four? Or people could read a variety, and we could come with a topic, whatever interests them if they Google, what do you think on that?
And can we get those on the city website, if we get you links?
Yeah, I did send you an attachment today with, and you may have got, you might not have seen it yet.
Yeah, you had sent it to Joel.
Yeah, 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 so-
I would like to reference all of them, if you don't have to.
Okay, yeah, and then you might find more on the topic and bring new dimensions, so-
Yeah, I think that's a good-
Throw all of there.
Yeah.
One of the things that was interesting, the second of the ones, and Joel, I think you may have found that there was something from The Atlantic, but the one that was after that basically re-referenced The Atlantic article. So both of those probably aren't-
Necessary.
But the big struggle, like the one from The Washington Post, it's on Pueblo, Colorado, and it's a hundred and eight thousand population, and they call it small town. And I just, I struggle with trying to make that fit what our situation is. But, you know, there's some points in it. So, yeah, I like the idea of, like Gregory was saying, let's get a bunch of them out there. And the only link that I had was that Washington Post one, and then Joel had one, and then-
Well, I just created a Word document with all the links, a list of the links, and that's what I sent you.
Could we just send that over to Ann and have her put it up on the-
Yeah, I think I sent it to Mike today, so.
Yeah, we'll get, we can get them all posted.
Yeah, and if they're, but I hadn't really had a chance to cull through them, I just found them and skimmed them. So I, you know, it was more, you know, I don't, I don't know if they're the best or not, but, well, oh, yeah, that's the Washington Post one, never mind, so. Okay, well, if you don't mind, the two of you kind of taking the lead, and we'll probably, and Greg's suggesting that we post most of these, but if you find, maybe if you skim through and find a couple that should just be eliminated, we could do that, you know? Or maybe there's some other great ones out there. I didn't even get through the whole list that came up, I, you know, I just started looking at them, so. But I ain't going to be gone almost that whole time period, so it's going to be hard to-
You're not going to work while you're gone?
Not while, well, I ain't going to be out of the country, so it's going to be hard to find out about American malls.
Our next meeting must be the thirteenth.
Yes.
And I will, I will be absent.
Oh, you will be absent, okay. Well, then I'll lean on Rob for, and if anyone else comes up with anything by Googling the topic, send it to Rob and Mike, and we'll, so, hopefully, okay. Well, I guess there's nothing more to say tonight.
Because we're done.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.